...the Pine Acres subdivision, known as Portland Way. What we have is we have the bond that's overdue and some other issues, so speaking to that, come up here. Okay, go ahead.
No, I'm just here to apply for an extension on the bond.
Okay, and when was the bond up?
The bond was, I think, just up in Oc- oh, it's actually up in October.
This year?
This year.
It's not October yet?
October twenty, twenty twenty.
Twenty-two, it was up a year ago.
A year ago, oh, wrong date. But yeah, so I met with Carl a couple of weeks back and told him where we were and filed with Kate and asked for an extension and the Nord Bank is on board as well.
Okay. Carl, you made note before to us about overdue bonds and all that stuff. Can you comment on what's going on and what's up and so on?
Sure, Mr. Chair, Carl Waldorf Town Engineer for everybody's benefit. Mr. Verderber has a subdivision off the North Street Pine Acres. The road is in, it's bindered, and I think three of the four lots are sold out and occupied. The sidewalk is not in, the streetlights aren't in, the curb isn't in. I think those things should be in at this point with people occupied. We've had inquiries from the residents, so we're had a discussion with Mr. Verderber about completing that, and I believe he has plans to get underway this fall. He can go as far as he wants. If he can get all the work done, he can top out the road as far as I'm concerned at this point, but we're after that. If you extend this thing, I wouldn't extend it any more than another year because it should be done.
That's all we're looking for is a year. And after, the original intention is just to make sure all the heavy equipment was out of there before we went to any curbing or file. And the curbing has been, Gravity's been giving the go-ahead to start with the curbing. And so now it just comes down to a matter of acquiring the curb.
All right. Carl, what's the standard plowing?
Once they're occupied, the DPW will go in and plow for public safety reasons, so they've likely been in there plowing the road. And Mr. Verderber can elaborate on that. I know if you have been or they have been, I'm not sure who has.
No, so once, probably twenty, twenty-one, after the first house was sold two years ago, the town, probably halfway through, about six months in, the town started plowing. The first few times they didn't, but then the town did. The fire department wanted the town to go in there for safety reasons to make sure the road was plowed.
Okay. Now, this kind of parallels or entails into what you've been talking about, Carl, is this is one of the biggest reasons since I've been here why these streets don't get done, because the town plows them. If they had a plow themselves, they'd be paying that all winter. That's not a good, and I've balked on that forever, and it just seems to be out of my hands. If it wasn't plowed, each developer would not want to be paying every year thousands of dollars of plow.
Well, Mr. Chair, that policy has been in place. I'm not sure when it went in, but I'd certainly be open for discussion about it with the DPW Director and the Fire Department.
Well, okay, the Fire Department has nothing to do with it because this, it's up to them. It's their road, it's a private road. We shouldn't be going on a private road. Do we plow the private roads around town?
Right, I don't disagree. I'm not sure of the origins of this, Mr. Chair.
I just, that's one of the things that keeps these things perpetuating for years and years and years, so. True question?
Oh, I was just gonna say, what about assessing a fee for the town's services? I mean, that would have to go, we can't, I don't think, do this tonight, but I mean...
Well, the town's always looking away for money.
The town is expending services for a road that's not theirs.
Yes. That and the fact that if they damage something, who are they gonna go after? Guy comes down with, I know had in the past where the manholes were up and they get pushed halfway down when the bucket loader hits it, so that's not a bad idea.
Yeah, at least at this point, the standards changed. The manholes are flush. Years ago, when I was here, the first time, they were ramped and that was not a good policy, but now all the manholes are fl- castings are flush in the subdivisions. They're up and they're flush, so it's easier to plow.
Yeah, I think that came about because one of the board members who also plowed, Eddie Collins, ripped one off and he didn't want his equipment getting damaged anymore, so he got his way. You weren't there for that, Carl.
No, but I go back a long way with Mr. Collins.
Oh, we have both of us, not quite as long as you, but that's one of the reasons they did it, made it easier. Okay. John, do you have any questions, comments now, or do you want me to, does anybody here wants to speak? How do you guys wanna do it?
No, I, if it has in fact been, the bond expired almost a year ago, at this point, we should encourage it get done and if that means assessing a fee for, if the town is plowing it and he's not, and it hasn't been accepted, be an encouragement to expedite work on it, I guess.
Okay. Kate?
I'm okay with a year.
Okay. Sarah?
Yeah, I'm fine, but one year.
Okay, before we get to that, is there anybody here from the neighborhood wanna speak? If you do, come on up. Name and address. I assume it's Portland.
It's great.
Right.
Steve Morris, eight Portland Way. We moved in last October. I know there's a tenant, a resident that moved in in nineteen. To not have a streetlight at this point, public safety matter. To not have a curb, it's supposed to be in, public safety matter. Give him another year, he's already had four. It doesn't take a year to put a curb in to do the street, it's just a ridiculous amount of time. By a year, by not six months, by not three months. And the fact that you wanna assess him for not plowing, we're paying city taxes, or town taxes, and they're heavy, they're not cheap, so I think that's part of, you know, me living in the street and you guys forcing him to get it done. He's had plenty of time. There's only four houses in the neighborhood, four. He's had four years. I mean, I don't, a year is way too long. I should have a streetlight. I come overnight, my daughter comes overnight, she can't see. It's a safety factor. I don't think a year is beyond. You're not gonna hold his feet to fire a year, what happens in a year? That's the answer then. That's all I'd say.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have a question, comment? All right. I went down there a couple, what?
Someone in the background.
Oh, okay, come on up.
So, I'm representing the tenant that is the first house to move in, so everything that was said, definitely agree with that. This has been going on for a little bit too long at this point. Would like to have our mailbox not sitting in a bucket. Would like to actually go forward, getting a curb in there, getting a sidewalk in there if that's what the town is actually saying we need to get done. We're all willing to get this done, we wanna get this done, we've been waiting long enough. The poles for the light post has been sitting on the ground for years now. I don't see why it's a hold-up here. And the fact we're gonna extend it, again, what's the next step? Like another year from now? That's, we're the first house in, so it's kind of ridiculous at our point.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Dozer gone?
The dozer, no, that's, the dozer's on the right side of the cul-de-sac.
It's on the road? Right?
It's half on the road, correct.
I mean, Joe, we don't park equipment like it's placed to park, it shouldn't be there.
Well, that's part of the reason why the road's not done, is we're moving stuff around over there. The last house, I told them, one of the thought process was doing all the heavy equipment was out of there, and there's a lot of material to be moved. And respect to everybody, the past year and a half hasn't been a typical year.
But when I looked at the dozer, it was all rusty. I mean, that thing hadn't moved in a while.
That's Tom, with Gravity, they're doing the curbing too, so...
What are they gonna do? All right.
They've been given the go-ahead, so right now, and again, this is the problem, we're forgetting here is what's going on, to get help, to get anybody to do anything, to buy curb, so they've been given the go-ahead to put the curbing in, but they're getting, so now they're waiting if they can even get the curb.
Okay, then, believe me, I know this process better.
Yes.
Is the curb should already, it shouldn't have been, it hasn't been backordered for two years.
Again...
You've had it for, Joe, you had it for four years.
You're correct, but had we planned it that way, but we planned to have all the heavy equipment out of there before we put the curb in, that's why we're, why we are where we are.
Well, the dozer wouldn't affect the curb, you know, right on the curb.
The last house just started.
Yeah, I understand, but it goes down the driveway, that's where you go.
Again, in my initial conversation with Maggie back when, she said she preferred when all heavy equipment was out of there.
Oh, how long's Maggie, how long's Maggie been gone?
So this is, we applied for the bond in two thousand, October of two thousand eighteen, so this is, this will be three years, not four. Yes, we're behind. Believe me, I want the curb in too.
So what is the ETA for the curb?
I called Tommy today and actually followed up with Bobby Bay from REPCO to see if they can get it in that quicker.
Okay. All right, what else you got on the curb? Then you gotta get the sidewalks, sidewalk's not even started. You really can't start them till you put the curb in, correct?
Correct, it's gonna go right after the curb, and then what the, when I spoke with Carl, the anticipation is to do the sidewalk, excuse me, put the curb in, sidewalk right behind it, the taco to driveways. Ideally, we're gonna do the whole thing at once.
Okay, next question, it'll probably be for the people who live there, is sprinklers. How many people have sprinkler systems?
Nobody.
Nobody has sprinkler systems, so they're not gonna get ripped up and be under the sidewalk.
We installed our own.
Okay. Do you know how far back you gotta be from the road?
Well...
Because I don't know where the sidewalk's coming, I don't know, I don't know. There's no flag to come to where it is.
Well, let's, we're not gonna get out of the conversation. They do know, they know it's seven feet off the curb, off the sidewalk, it was all marked.
What's seven feet?
Excuse me?
What's seven feet, the sidewalk?
That's approximately the other side, their side of the sidewalk, correct.
Sidewalks, no, it's ten.
Where it's going, excuse me?
Ten feet, you got the grass strip.
From where we are, and it gets flagged and the town can do something, but anyways, we're good.
What about the lights? What's your thought on the lights?
The lights? There's only one light going in, and that's going in. Every source wants us to add another line, four-inch conduit to a full box. That's gonna get done, Tom is supposed to do it potentially beginning of next week. When that goes in, the light, one light post goes in.
So now you gotta dig another trench for the conduit?
Yes. So that's going around with the sidewalks. The sidewalk ends after the first house, which is the woman who just spoke, because the tenant, it ends at their house. The light post goes right after that.
What about doing a shorter extension with a fee thereafter?
Well, what I'd like to see is stuff moving along, so up till December first, have to see a couple of months to get it done, see where you go. If you're moving on forward, we continue, and I'm sure the people will be happy.
Yeah, no, I believe, I want it done too. This isn't something I can just yell at people. The last house has been sitting dormant for five months, I can't get people there.
Well, my thought is, give it to, well, snow flies, December first, so...
December fifteenth, Mr. Chairman, I suggest, because paving often, plants will remain open till about that time.
Yeah.
They'll give it even three months or so, yeah.
All right, December fifteenth? December first? All right, does everybody understand we'll give it to December fifteenth, then see what happens, and if nothing's happened, we'll have another meeting before that, because you're gonna have to get another extension.
When we talk for December fifteenth, curbing in?
Yeah, curbing and a light, if you get the paving.
Extend the bond to...
Once you pave out, we'll do that.
I understood, but we wanna see, that the people understood, a whole year, you can sit there and with your thumb, sit in there for a year, and that's what we wanna see.
That's fine by me.
Curbing, lights, and sidewalk. As Mr. Verderber can handle the pave out of the individual lot driveways as he wishes.
And I ask you, Joe, when you find out when these guys are coming?
Yep. I'll talk to Carl.
Okay, and email Kate, so if anybody calls, this is what we've been told, so everybody knows, okay? Make a motion to extend this up through December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one?
Second.
Are we extending the bond to that point?
Mr. Chairman, I believe you have somebody else that would like to comment?
I just have a quick question.
Can you, can you come up to the microphone? State your name and address.
Burke Kafka, three eighty-nine North Street. I just have a quick question, where they cut into the septic, into the development, the patch job wasn't really done very well, so all the large trucks that go by, the plows that go by, just smack into it, rattle everything, so I don't know if it will be repatched or repaved, or what the situation, what that would be.
Yeah, so that was done, out of courtesy, I did that a second time. Jones put that in the first time, then I had the taco done again to patch that. That was the connection that you guys gave in with Jones, but yes, that will be a grinded overlay, and that will, the whole road and Portland Way will get done at the same time, yeah, so all the way back to Bumbers or to Smith Street to your right, heading towards the town, where they, where we extend the superline from there, all the way into Portland Way is gonna get done at the same time.
Do you know when that will be? Or...
No, so we have to, that's a whole discussion, is the curb, that's gonna go first, and then sidewalks, and then everything after that.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, you had a motion, you had a second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay. December fifteenth extension, and probably be talking before that, whether we need to come back in, and we'll notify the residents if anything to that effect. All right? Hopefully it'll get done, all right. Well, set with the Portland. Okay, next one we have, New World. We have a continued public hearing, and that's at seven oh one, and at seven oh two, we had the scenic road hearing.
We're waiting for comments on the scenic road.
So, given the fact that we're both well past that time, and we need the scenic road first, correct, Dan?
Doesn't really matter, but yeah, that makes sense.
It makes sense in the fact that we didn't have the commentary needed from the Fire Department, okay, and for, oh, this is for, I'm sorry, this is for the, what do you call it, subdivision?
It's the scenic road, is that what?
Okay, the scenic road, we have from the hearing, is we have no comment, no determination of any land disturbance, so that's from the conservation. Sew and water, that's on the subdivision. From Gen, Cones, Conesc, I don't, Conacus, sorry, September second, and she said that she...
Historical Commission?
Yeah, she indicated that historical commission, she forwarded to them, and given the existing fence is not at least a hundred years old, or historically significant, I don't believe that the plan changes fall within the purview of the commission. He does, she does applaud the fact that the RDZ associates is trying to keep everything as close to, as close as it is, and for all their reuses, so that is for the scenic road. And, let's see, another one. This one, Kate, I hate emails, especially when they trail, and this is from Karen Cummings, do you know who that was?
Yeah, if you go down to the very bottom, Jack, I made it, I know where you are, where you're from. See, she couldn't be here tonight.
Oh, that's for the subdivision. And the last one is Carl's. You wanna read it?
Is this on the scenic road, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it is. It's September tenth?
Yes. We had previously commented that we wanted a couple of things, a foundation for the proposed granite walls, which Mr....
Merrican.
Merrican has provided, as well as a depth of bury, and we wanted some notes addressing the ownership, the maintenance of the fence and walls, and that they would be, because they're split between or in and out of the proposed right-of-way and the existing right-of-way line, that the, that the walls would be maintained by the abutting lot owners, similar to what has been done with the current wall and fence.
Okay, thank you. I did, as Katie pointed out, news Cummings wanted to know about the trees, but the trees are on the builder's property, so they're not part of our scenic road hearing.
Correct. No street trees.
No trees, okay. I think I got everything on the scenic road that's new. Sorry, do you have any questions, comments we got on the scenic road?
The scenic, no, I have, just have a couple of questions on the subdivision.
Okay, Kate?
No.
John? Anyone in the audience have questions, comments we got on the scenic road? Got to get a fence to hold everybody back here, so I'll make a motion to close the hearing?
Second. Go ahead, John.
Second. Any further discussions? Okay, all those in favor, close the hearing?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. Make a motion to approve the scenic road for thirty-eight Peach Street.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, abstain. Okay, four zero zero. All right, got one down, Dan, ready for the next one? Now we go back to the subdivision, and I think we, the reason we held this over for anybody watching or out there is because you had to have the scenic road up to snuff, because if you didn't, what's now?
I'm just, I'm supposed to take one?
Oh. Is, it could change, and you know, if you make a change on the scenic road, it'll affect his plan, so that's why typically they go concurrently, so I'll explain it to anybody who's wondering. So with that being said, I do have two items from the Fire Department that we needed. One of them is the approved Litchfield's Way. So you knew that, right?
I didn't know that. Good to know.
Okay, so, big hurdle. Big hurdle. We only went through, how many names though? We're fielding, only two, I thought more. And from the Fire Department, Paul Barry, Deputy Fire Chief. Fire Department has reviewed the application, and we find the location hydrant located on our side of the cul-de-sac acceptable. Reason behind this is we often find fire hydrants located at the end of cul-de-sac inevitably buried, and we deferred the determination of the necessity of the previous hydrant located at the end of cul-de-sac to the water department. And the next one is if the street name hasn't been proposed, which it has, so you're all set on the hydrants. Okay. Did you have any more comments, Carl? Or you're all set?
I don't believe I do, Mr. Chairman. I believe in one of the later reviews, I'd recommended that there be some information put on, maybe that was, no, I'm sorry, that was probably another subdivision. No, I don't think I do, I think all my last comments were addressed.
Okay, John?
No, I don't believe I have any extra comments.
Okay, Kate?
I don't have any new comments. I have a question about the special, the, if we close it? Can we, although it's not a condition, can we put in a condition that says, suggest, we suggest that they keep to the architecture that currently exists? Even though it's not a condition, and I understand, just so that it shows...
It holds no water?
Yeah.
And to wave the flag, oh, this is good, I don't, I'm not a believer in that.
So it won't do anything?
Well, first off, you suggest, and then I'm bound by it. Second off, by the general master and law of subdivision control, we have no control over the houses.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay, Sarah?
So regarding Concom, did that, you, you kind of read a letter from them, but did they say they, they have any comments?
This is what she had.
They issued a permit, they issued the land disturbance permit for this.
Oh, they did?
Oh, they did, okay.
A month ago, a month and a half ago.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and there were no wetlands either, right?
There's a small wetland offsite.
Okay.
Typically, they'll tell us what numbers, three fifteen dash whatever, so...
Okay, and then my only other question is related to the cul-de-sac, which you agreed to in the last meeting, Mr. Merrican, to take out that one, so just on the final plans.
Yeah, you guys voted to remove the final hydrant, so when we submit for endorsement, that won't be there.
Okay, just wanted to check that. That's it.
That's it? Okay, I don't have anything. Anybody in the audience, questions, comments relative to this? Okay, being none, and I don't see, I'll make a motion to close. Second, any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's four zero zero. And... We have phase C standard condition twenty-one, I'm not quite sure. Yeah, well, you still have to submit your development schedule?
Right, we'll do that prior to endorsement. There's two waivers that we talked about.
We voted those, correct?
No, not yet.
No, we voted on the plan, I believe, though.
The waivers?
Yeah, we voted on the plan a while ago. You got the plan?
I didn't think so. I got the plan, yeah, do you want the plan?
Yeah, that's where the waivers are, correct?
They're on the cover.
About stormwater.
Yeah, I could've sworn we did these one night, because we usually do these upfront. Yeah, all right. These are the waivers that was requested by the applicants, section four dash six C three, not to require stormwater basis to have a slope bottom, and, that's what I was dreaming, and the next one was four, six C five, not to require storm basis to have stone-lined channels from inlet to outlet, okay? I'll make that in a form of motion.
Second.
Second. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and those will be on the, do we typically put the waivers on the decision case?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and those will be the two special conditions that are already on the plan that were voted, and stormwater, and I believe that was it, right? Two conditions. Everything else is the standard conditions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
The issue of the maintenance of the walls and what I suggested as part of the scenic road, could that also be added as a special condition?
And what did you wanna do for the walls?
I want the, each abutting lot owner to be responsible for the maintenance of the walls. So if you want lot numbers?
Is there anything, anyone that says they can't be taken?
I think it is noted on the plan.
It is noted.
It is, but I wanted, it comes out a little louder if it's in the special condition in the decision. If it's your desire, I'm recommending it.
All right.
I agree.
Lot owner, well, the only thing is responsible for the fence, right?
It's lot one and lot five.
Lot one and five, okay. That was, I think that was, nothing else, right, Carl?
That's it.
There are the three conditions, the stormwater outlets, the stormwater slope, and they gotta hold on to the...
Those are waivers, right? So you have the one special condition.
Yeah, those are waivers and the special condition, yeah, but those are under our special conditions.
That's a separate section for waivers, I think.
Do we?
So the waivers will appear on the waiver section, and that one special condition will be in the special.
We got three, we're adding, they'll be put in the right slots. So if there's nothing, I'll make a motion to approve the New World subdivision. So I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Sarah, any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, so let's vote, so we have both your subdivision and your scenic road, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
At the hour being after seven oh five, we have continued public hearing for Bristol subdivision. And we have from the attorney for Bristol Brothers, excuse me. And they say, as you're aware, we represent the Bristol Development, we respect the pending application. Industrial subdivision Ranma. And a fifty-five point thirty-two acre property. We further request a continuance until the scheduled meet on November fourth. Additionally, Bristol Brothers Development agrees the deadline for the decision shall be extended through November thirtieth. In the interim, Bristol requests a review and the discussion of the proposed improvement modifications to the AQV lot layout. The proposed modifications will not impact the dwelling count. Are they trying to get everything on one page?
They just threw that in?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Never seen a lawyer, you get paid another five hundred bucks for another piece of thing. Wow.
And by the way, we want to
If you put it on a thirty-six by forty-eight sheet, you get a lot of money. Especially if it's a my lot. Down on CAD. Okay, when they sent that email back, did everybody get a idea of what they're doing?
I, yes, I followed that, the original.
Because last meeting, time Sarah said, what's up with this, and they're gonna do something with it, so that's why.
Right, but we haven't seen this one yet.
That one just came in today.
But I think it relates to what they're, why they're asking, so.
So something new beyond the August thirtieth, you mean?
Yeah, so they, it sounds like they're gonna come in and modify something to the subdivision and something to do with the AQV. So make a motion to allow the applicant up through November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, four zero zero. And
What was the date again?
November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, I'm sorry. And he wants, he wants to continue us on the fourth of November, is that an issue? Okay. And we will continue this public hearing on November fourth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven oh five?
Yeah.
Seven oh five, okay. That being done, alright. Next one, we have Marini, fourteen twenty-seven Main Street, special permit, Marini site plan approval. So we have from Latman, Bobowski, and Haverty, the attorneys represented fourteen twenty-seven Main Street, and dated the ninth. It says this office represents fourteen twenty-nine Main Street, and address is three, three, four, three, four, five, Rep. Street Canton. And the board opened the hearing on July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. During the public hearing, the board requested the plan be modified to be revised a twenty-six foot buffer setback to rear fourteen twenty-seven, fourteen twenty-nine. The applicant wishes to comply with the board's request. The applicant will refile an application, show and such revisions by email dated August ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. The chair opined the reference application should be withdrawn accordingly, please accept this correspondence, the formal request to withdraw without prejudice. So I'll make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw both the special permit case twenty-one oh three and what's the other one? And site plan twenty-one oh two, without prejudice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, the discussion, the reason being is, kind of sorry, my way, because they're gonna have to resubmit a plan that's twenty-six feet, so that's a whole new plan. And you can't modify this, because that wouldn't, so you gotta take everything back. So he'll be back with a new plan at the twenty, he hasn't filed anything, has he, Kate? Okay. And then a second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain. Okay, so down goes Mr. Marini, this thing for now. And moving on, we have, I need to find that for that. Okay, with the hour we have two applications, I'll read them, I'm gonna read them both. And we passed the hour, both of them, and typically we run them together because they are about the same lot and everything else. So first one is there'll be a public hearing, seven twenty, main meeting room, for site plan application from Hash Brown Holdings LLC, case twenty-five oh one, with the property located two seventy-two, two seventy-four South Street, and assesses map forty-one parcel sixty-four in District I in LM. The applicant is seeking on the site plan review sections thirteen, to allow construction of a ten thousand five hundred square foot commercial building with related parking, outside storage utilities as shown on the plan by GLM Engineering. With that being said, we have opened that. And now we have the special permit September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, seven twenty-one, a special permit application from Hash Brown Holdings LLC, lot located two seventy-two, two seventy-four, South Street, case twenty-one oh six, we respect the property located and shown on the assessors map, forty-one parcel sixty-four, zoning districts I in LM. Applicant seeking special permit on section twelve, water resource protection, that will render it more than fifteen percent impervious. Project design requires installation of stormwater best manager practices that meet or exceed the standards. And proper pretreatment of stormwater recharge will be instructed to mitigate the improvements as on a plan by GLM Engineering. Okay, with that being said, the hearing is open, and on site plan a three zero, three one, a three two vote, you're all set. Special permit for minimal.
Fine with that, Mr. Chairman. We discussed it.
You're fine with going ahead, or you're fine with the mass laws?
No, he's fine, we're going forward tonight.
Okay, you're going ahead, alright.
Phil can still vote, right? He can, now we can?
That's, well, see, that's one thing I always warn people is, everybody asks about this Mullen rule, there's nothing that binds Phil to do it. He could just say, I don't want to do it.
Yeah, he could, yeah.
That's what these people don't understand, they come in front of us, and if I say, no, I'm not gonna do it, now they're
No, we understand that Phil has the ability to do that, the Mullen rule is in effect. We also know he may just elect not to. But, I mean, we, the applicant would like to go forward this evening, so we've talked about it. We think it's a pretty straightforward plan overall. It's a good plan, so we'd like to go forward.
Okay. With that being said typical, you know, proof in the audience is, we'll let the applicant show us what he's got. Gonna explain a few things, give the presentation. After he's done, I will read any of the comments from the town boards and committees that have to are supposed to respond, and after that we open it up to us, and at the end, you guys could ask questions. If you just want to hold, because typically you might hear something during the full time that's gonna ask you a question. So with that being said and also, if you're not familiar with it, we have the, because this is a site plan, but you also have the resource protection. So they gotta mitigate the water, so it all kind of ties together. They're in two separate things, but it's all like in one plan. So, that being said, Rob?
Hey, for the record, Rob Truax of GLM Engineering Consultants. With me tonight is Ian Brown, he's the owner of Ash Browns Holding LLC. So this is a project site located on South Street, it's at building number two seventy-two, two seventy-four. If you're familiar with South Street, this property is located directly across from the Oak Street intersection. It's fenced off, it's currently, this is a, up on the board is the existing site conditions as it exists today. The building is shown in the middle here. The building is the home for his landscape company, Ian Brown owns a landscape company in town. He also has a couple tenants on the site as well that use the property. So if you look at the site today, there is an existing building located, it's, I don't know the exact square footage, it's four thousand square feet. And there's some paved areas, which is in the dark. Paved area, colored up. And then the rest of the site, as shown in the lighter gray, is the gravel, outdoor gravel parking site that's being used today. The dark green to the rear is the forested area in the back. The site is down in the south, I guess this is the southeast corner, it abuts in the Ponset River. This is in the Ponset River, that actually clips the corner of the property. There is a vegetated wetland associated with that river. We, just for record keeping, we have filed a notice of intent, we've had our first hearing, we've had a site walk as of yesterday with the commission. We have another hearing next week with them as well. We think things went pretty well on the site walk. So when we look at the site today, we, it's three and a half acres approximately. Of that, there's about, just over, almost eighty-three thousand square feet of impervious surface. And when I say impervious surface, I starred that on your application, because I consider the gravel area as impervious surface. The gravel's been there for so many years, it's been driven on, it's been compacted. The water really doesn't infiltrate it if it rains, so we kind of look at that as an impervious surface when we look at drainage for the site. So what we're proposing, and just to go over it again, so it does use some outdoor storage, the site's fenced in, other than this gravel area here. There's storage bins in the back, there's a couple trailers. There's storage trailers on the site, there's a lot of outside storage, snowplows, sanders, you know, landscape equipment, there's landscape materials, there's some ground curving, some stone, crushstone in the bins. There's some shrubs, bushes, trees, and, you know, plantings that are also stored on the site. And so that's, it's all the outdoor area that's being used today. So the entire outdoor area is being used for either storage, trucks, cars, vehicles, employees, et cetera. So what we're proposing to do is keep the existing building as you see it today. And then construct a second building, which is ten thousand five hundred square feet. It's sixty by a hundred and seventy-five feet in length. We put it at fifty-one feet off of South Street, the minimum setback is fifty feet in the in the LM district. As you can see on the site, this is the zone line. It runs through the site. The back of the site is industrial, the front of the site is limited manufacturing. So we have to adhere to the fifty-foot setback from the road. In the industrial zone, that could go down to as low as twenty-five feet. So we're looking to put up the building, and this area here is shown. We would like to increase the footprint of the overall site slightly. So we're looking to push out in the back corner here. Which is this area here. We're also looking to go into the tree land, which is in this corner right here, to get allow access around the new building. So there's not much of an increase, we're going from eighty-three thousand square feet of impervious, that's counting the gravel surface, to a new number of ninety-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-three square feet. So it goes from fifty-three point eight percent to sixty-four percent of impervious coverage on the site. We are proposing to pave the majority of the site. The area that's dark, would all be pavement. We could pave this entire area around the building. We're proposing to leave this area on the other side, as it is today, with gravel, just leave it alone. The storage bins would be relocated in the back corner. The area under the storage bins would be paved, so there would be no materials or anything that can go through the surface. They'd be boxed in with the, you know, large retaining wall type blocks, as he has today on the site. We've, we've gone out to the site, we've done some soil testing. We, Kyle was there, the town engineer witnessed the testing, we did some deep holes. We established the high groundwater in the area, we also did a permeability test. The soils are sands and gravels, rapid permeability, infiltration's very, very easy on the site. It's gonna take a lot of water. So we're looking to do for a drainage system, we're gonna capture the entire paved area. We're gonna capture the new building, and we're gonna put that all into infiltration systems under the parking area. So this side of the site, the front, and this paved area goes to a low point over here, which we catch with catch basin. We run that into a treatment unit, and then it goes into an underground infiltration system. We run off, goes into the infiltration system as well. And there's a second infiltration system in the back, this entire parking area on the back, all sheds this way. It comes, this all sheds in, everything's being captured into a localized catch basin. Again, it could be the unit into a large infiltration system under the ground. The infiltration systems are designed with an overflow. It can discharge through the upper site into the woodland area. If you look at the grading on the site, we're really not changing much of the grading in this area, however as we come around this corner of the building, the site does drop off into the woods here, so it's maybe eight or ten feet. So we're gonna build a, they're proposing to build a retaining wall all along. And you travel down, and then actually go behind the storage bins, the rooftop storage bins. In this area here, this wall gets about eighty feet high, that's the highest point. Where fence, there's a fence on the site now, we replace that fence and put it on top of the wall through this area, and it was a wall way high, it would also include a guard rail in front of the fence, in front of the wall. We provided about twenty-seven feet from the building to the face of the wall, so we can get around the building with vehicles. Tried to minimize that for two reasons. One is, we're working within the two-hundred-foot riverfront area, at the Ponset River, so Conservation Commission has concerns about all that work that goes on there. Access to the site is gonna remain the same. We have an access point here, in front of the new building, it's currently there. And we have a second access point right across the street from Oak Street. The gated access is now, they both have gates with locks, their entire site is fenced in. There is an access that's sorted in this area, it's right now, there's boulders in there, and that's gravel way. If, maybe, some of you may recall, but this area here was the parking area for the trail system that goes out around the Ponset River at one point in time. And after Mr. Brown bought the property, with some conversations with the town the town actually did the work, and they moved the parking area off the property onto the town property, which is next door. So that took place. There is a trail system that goes out from that parking area, if you're familiar, goes out, goes across the river. It also goes across Mr. Brown's property, up towards the highway garage in that direction. The building will tie into the town sewer, there's sewer coming down South Street. It turns and goes up Oak Street. It's relatively deep in that area, it's about twenty feet in depth to the impurves in that area. I've talked to the town engineer, what we're gonna attempt to do is connect into the current service, gonna be this new building. Come out of this building with a manhole hole, and tap into that with a manhole, and then connect in, so you don't have to do any deep trenching within, within South Street. The building will also have town water. It will be sprinkled, it's gonna be required to have sprinklers, so there'll be two water taps that will come in, one for domestic, one for sprinkler service. I don't know, I have some pictures of, I don't know if we gave them to you in the submission. But we have some pictures of what the building will look like from the street, which I can give to you, so you can get a rough idea of that.
Thought he had separate folders.
Thank you.
So the idea of the building design is to faces the street, it will look kind of like a office, it'll have doors, windows. There won't be any garage doors facing South Street. So all the garage doors and entryways for the vehicles will be on the backside. So if you flip and you see the rear view all the bays and the garage doors will be to the rear. So when you drive down the street, you won't see the garage doors. The idea of this is, primarily this new building, the majority of it will be occupied by Ash Browns Holdings, the landscape company, Ian Brown Landscaping. So he plans to move his business into this building and occupy primarily, probably about eighty percent. We, this is, there is kind of a draft landscape plan in here, we did put that into the plan set. You'll see a landscaping plan, so that we're gonna do some planting along the street. There's really not a lot we can do in the rear of the site, however, we are gonna do some However, we are gonna do some, I don't know if it's pertinent to this board, but we will be doing some restoration down in the woodland area here, where there's been some invasives and some filling that took place for the Conservation Commission, so we'll need to do some work down there. But, I think that's pretty much an overview.
Okay. Read the comments from other boards that kind of send here, but let me know. If they don't care, or...
I like that. Maybe he doesn't have it.
I'll retire the deal on GLM. Which I am, but, the proposed, from the Conservation, dated September tenth. They say it's under review, with a notice of intent hearing continued to September twenty-second. All right. Next one is from Reich Sterrett. She's the deputy health agent. She indicated, back on August twenty-seventh, received a plan for two seventy-two, two seventy-four south. She was wondering what the use of the additional commercial billing used for? Is this an expansion of the business, another company coming in?
Actually, I had a conversation with her. By the way, it's not Reich, it's Rike.
R-I-K-E.
That's how you say it, I don't know. I say it.
One of the things that we've had problems of recent times is the, they gotta say, yes, we like it, or no, we don't.
That's fine.
So, get something to that effect.
I'll reach out to her again, sure.
Tell everybody that, I told you before, because it's an easy thing to appeal. It should come from the board, for their board too, so...
I'll reach out to her again.
Let's see. From the sewer and water, dated September sixteenth. And this is probably related to more of the...
Special permit.
Special permit. All right, first off, they indicated this is fourteen hundred feet from the closest wells, and is in locating area one, act for protection. It's just the new building should prohibit use of storage of chemicals unless storage includes load areas that is within the structural design, within the structure designed to prevent the generation and escape of contaminated runoff of leachat. Oh, that's a good one. Storage of commercial fertilizers defined by Mass General Law is one twenty, chapter twenty-eight, section sixty-four, unless such storage is within the structures designed to prevent the escape. Any roof leaders shall be directed to recharge into the ground. Show locations for parking lots and disclose what chemicals will be used for snow and ice, unless all the chemicals will be stored on site, and indicate how they will be stored. And the board is concerned about the tariffs will be stored in the storage areas in the rear view, and what actually be taken if they end up in the Ponson River.
Mr. Chair, could you move your microphone? There's some comments in the audience that are unable to hear you very well.
All right. Sorry. What they want, they're just telling us that the wells close within fourteen hundred feet, but they're concerned about fertilizers, they don't want any fertilizers, just leaching out, that's the biggest thing, and they wanna, and they got a list of chemicals, which is a requirement that we've had up on Walpole Park South, and at the back half of the property, what you're putting in the bins. So, that might, I suggest, should be identified on your plans, so everybody knows what you're gonna put there. I assume you're not putting fertilizer, but...
We don't do fertilizer.
Yeah, so stone and...
Oxalate.
Yeah. Next one, Carl, we have yours. You want to do yours?
Sure, Mr. Chair. I delivered a memo dated September tenth to the board. First of all, Mr. Truax did a great summary on, on the site describing utilities, the layout, the drainage, all those things. I agree with his presentation. Sewer and Water also did a great job of covering the issues under the special permit. In our letter, I only had ten comments. I note that there's not a site lighting or a truck turning, fire truck turning plan, which is customary for site plans. We did not receive a storm or water report, although the design, stormwater design is, is a good design, as Mr. Truax has described it and shown it on the plans. We would like to see the report, and I note that we won't recommend approval of the special permit until we have done that. We have a note about putting the, actually, what permits are being filed on the cover sheet of the plan set. We have some other comments on utilities. We also, as we will on just about every site plan, we'll review, want to make sure and verify and show that site distances and sight lines are shown on the plans with distances and stopping, site distance that are appropriate. Also wanna see a handicap space, although that's really a building code issue, but I believe you're gonna have to have at least one or two on that, on that, somewhere on that parking plan that can form. We did comment on the very easterly end of the new building, where Mr. Truax was describing the, the wall being eight feet high. We noticed that that's a fairly narrow area, and I actually cleared it up a little bit. We, we've noted that that would be a tight bay, garage bay facing to the south of the back of the site. But, once we received the elevations, we noticed that that end looks like it's, there's at least a portion blocked out for office.
Yeah.
So, the garage doors are shifted down a little bit. So, we just noted that that end is a little, would be a little tight to, to maneuver with trucks into a garage door. That's a very soft comment, because, you know, it depends on what you're putting in there. If you're putting smaller trucks, one tons, whatever it is in there, it's no problem. If it's something big, or maneuvering down there might be a problem. So, we just noted that that was tight. We then provided on the grading drainage plan several comments about showing the different, different utilities or modifications. The most significant comment in that is that we look, the grading's a little scarce on the front near the new entrance. It looks like there's some water getting graded out onto South Street. We're asking them to try and avoid that, or put drainage over there if they need to, or whatever it is, and said, South Street's a road that doesn't have a lot of drainage on it, so we're trying to keep any site, site drainage on-site. Other than that, Mr. Truax covered it very well, the drainage is covered by his site system, and there are very good soils, and we have witnessed the soil tests. Then, the only other significant note is that we, we did see the trail along the green area shown on the plan, or the very easterly portion in the wooded area, and have actually asked that, that there be an easement conveyed to the town to preserve the rights in that trail. I don't know if that's an issue the planning board wants to get into or not, or if the conservation will, but I've noted it anyway.
I cut trees, I don't hug them.
What's that?
I cut them, I don't hug them. Trees.
The trail's already there.
No, I said, Carl, I don't hug them, I cut them, trees.
You were supposed to laugh.
He's not an environmentalist, he doesn't care about your trail.
I caught him off. It's, that goes, the trails, offsite trails, always end up with a concom. Plus, it's in their area, so even if we wanted to do it, it would be, it'd probably be in the wetlands. If they wanna do a trail, that, they'd be the ones.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, the trail is there, it's just a matter of getting an easement around it.
That's it?
That's it.
Oh. Oh, there it is, yeah, it was the last one, okay, thanks, Carl. That's big sphere of all the board comments, and Sarah?
Okay. Are you requesting a use variance with this new building?
A use variance?
Use, yeah.
For what? What use?
Because you're in Area One, in new commercial buildings.
We weren't requesting a use variance.
So, what's allowed in Area One and Two are residential? Or maintenance, repair, and enlargement of existing structures?
This is under the water resource?
Yep.
Yeah, it's under section twelve point three, point A, point two. If you were in Area Three, you could do commercial or industrial development, allowed in underlying zoning.
So, in Area One, can you, I'm not familiar with that, could you say it again?
So, in Area One and Area Two, excluding Zone One, which is, you know, the, the wellheads, the allowed uses are what's allowed in Zone One, which is basically like just walking, biking. Maintenance, repair, and enlargement of any existing structure otherwise not prohibited or require a special permit. And then, what's allowed? Farming, gardening, nursery, conservation, or different types of residential development of single-family homes.
So, you are saying the commercial use is not allowed?
That's the way I read it, yeah.
Well, you're gonna have to get that from...
We'll get that from the building inspector.
Yeah, because is this considered an extension? We can't grandfather them out, and one of the things in Zone One, they can't grandfather you out, so if it's an addition to, or however he interprets it. This was brand new, couldn't do it.
Right.
So, it's, it's not, you know, tied physically to the existing building?
Correct.
So, that's, is it really an extension of, I don't know?
Well, we'll ask the building inspector for interpretation of that.
Okay.
And I don't mean any of the props, Sarah, at the same time, just to help you out, is find out how T.R. Miller got there, that was before we did site plan. We've had the air...
Where's that?
What?
What's that again?
T.R. Miller, the big warehouse next year.
Oh, okay.
Ask them how that came, because that came after the protection, resource protection. That's a brand new building on that site, so they must've dealt with it back in the nineties, I would guess.
Before I was on this board.
Yeah, and before we did site plan.
Yeah.
That may help you out. That's the only one out there I can see that's been...
Before we did.
Oh, actually, another one, across the street, CrossFit.
CrossFit.
That's definitely after.
I don't know.
That's still new.
If that's in there, yeah, that's gotta be within the last twenty years. So, you have a couple new ones in there that, however...
DJA's in that section too?
It's on the right side going down.
What about...
The Area One, it just kind of cards out that...
Corner.
Piece where you are.
If you just take a look, and find out how all that happened.
Can you tell me the area of the existing building?
It's four thousand square feet. It's actually forty-two hundred, to be exact, sorry.
Okay, that's roughly. Okay. So, in, in general, I'd like to see, really, a, a better demonstration of where the parking and the circulation is around the site.
We did have a parking plan in there somewhat.
There's a parking plan?
The layout. Yeah.
Oh, okay. 'Cause I see there's, there was some parking over on...
On the sides.
On the side, and then from your presentation, I noted that you're shifting that parking, right, over towards that retaining wall now?
I don't show the parking on this sheet.
It's on your sheet three?
Yeah, three.
Not labeled as such, per se.
Would that be different sheets than we have?
No, I have the sheet two.
Well, number three, the layout sheet, it does have some lines that tend to indicate the parking, but it's not labeled as such.
And then, so if you have, if you have a parking plan, that's fine, but we just need to see exactly how many spaces, you know, dimensions of the, of the stalls.
Okay. There weren't dimensions on it.
Yeah, there's dimensions on page three. Okay. Well, I, yeah. They're very small. The, the number of spaces, like, my sheet three has both parking there and there, so, but then it seemed like you were getting rid of that one.
I see four spots, yeah.
Yeah, there, there, there. Yeah. And there, yeah, right, so...
Eighteen and a half deep.
Just a clear indication of what's staying and what's going.
One bit there, one bit there. I see two groups.
Put the parking count on here, too, right?
So, yeah. Yeah, number of. Here.
Parking count?
Yes.
As Sarah said, you get what you have and how you're riding it.
So, when you say parking, I mean, that's employee parking, but there's a lot of vehicle storage on the site.
That's different.
That's okay.
Vehicle storage is different, 'cause that's part of the site plan, but you have to do the parking in accordance with parking requirements.
Right.
If it's a warehouse, if it's an office, if it's a hospital, you have to show what you have.
Yeah, a lot of that's by employees, by number of people, occupants, but...
We just need to make sure that there's...
You have one employee, you still have to have probably thirty parking places based upon the size of the building. And the other thing comes down, is someday he sells it to someone else, that you're trying to keep it, that's why I forget. This is site plan, not subdivision. You have specialty. Or you do show driveway, maybe.
Sarah, did you, sorry to interrupt, but did you ask for circulation with that?
Yeah, I mean, the, the whole site, we wanna see that they can safely circulate.
Yeah, will be traffic between buildings.
I just wanted to touch on the circulation, 'cause I think a couple people have touched on it. We're, we use Oak Street because it's more of a public access, so truck and trailers and commerce will happen here and enter this way. Not between the buildings, although you can access safely, you know, for fire and... But, my intent is to keep it how it is now, this way. The one in front of the, maybe the homes across the street, where there's a gate there we don't use right now, we will use it, but I'll just be for vehicle parking, or, excuse me, vehicle access, like cars and sedans and things like that.
Okay.
Truck parking will come from Oak Street, that can do right now.
And then, the back bay of the new building is going to be garage spaces, so big trucks are gonna go from Oak Street around the back of that?
Yeah, they'll come back here, park in, back out, and, 'cause they're not going all the way through the building.
So, then, it looks like they're gonna go on maybe part of the new pavement and part of the gravel area?
Yeah, they'll come right around here, skirt this, and then come in.
Okay.
But, these, again, are all my vehicles. And currently, right now, we only have two garages here, and I have multiple vehicles now, so I'm, that's why we're building.
Okay.
So, he's, his trucks come in, they're all trailers. They're all landscape trucks with clone trailers.
Okay.
So, they got three-fifties with a, you know, twenty-foot trailer.
Six, yeah, so I have nine trucks, so I need to park, so that's it. So, that would be all for my use right there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't see a problem with it, it's just, you know, part of what we need to do is just make sure that there's safe circulation around the site. And then, so, the, show the dimensions, which you've shown mostly, the number of, and if there's any handicap spots, the location of those. And then, also show if you have any, like, walkways for people going from building to building, or any, anything like that.
Right now, it's just all paved around the building, and they just walk up to the building, it's no walkways, per se.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's paved all around that building today.
And then, according to your presentation, it looked like those, some of those bins are being demolished, but I didn't see that note on the plan.
I didn't.
Like, you're going to shift those?
We're gonna relocate these.
Yeah. So, if you could just note that on the plan, 'cause my plan just has bins on top of bins.
Oh, okay.
And then, if, if you're going to relocate any fencing, parking, those bins, to, to know what's, you know, what's being demolished or changed. And then, similar to what Sewer and Water had asked for, we need a complete list of the chemicals used on the site, and the measures that you are proposing to store them and contain them safely.
He doesn't store any chemicals.
Okay, well, we just...
Yeah, there's none.
We need to...
Yeah.
See that, or state that. And it's outlined in our bylaw exactly, you know, which Mass General Law refers to.
Yeah, he doesn't store, like, like you're thinking, maybe, like, he doesn't do salting, doesn't have salt bins, he doesn't have, you know, fertilizers for the lawns, he doesn't store any of that on-site.
Okay, so, yeah, I, I would just like to see that, like, you know, no salt storage, or, you know...
Sure.
All materials complying with bylaw, section twelve, something like that. And then, I wanted to ask, are you proposing any additional signs?
Got a new sign up?
I haven't thought about it. If I did, it'd be on the building, but currently, the, the building I have now has a four-by-three sign on it, the gate has a sign on it. That might be all we do, but it won't be on the street, it won't be on our posts, be on the building about the same size.
Okay. If, even if you're adding it to the, to the building, there are certain, you know, requirements that you have to fit within, so it'd be a good time now to just put it on the plan, so we can approve it. And then, the lighting of the site, are there any poles or lighting on the building or near the parking spots? And then, just a couple edits to the zoning table in the front? It doesn't impact your, your, um, project, but the required rear setback in LM is twenty-five, not ten. And the lot coverage by structures is fifty percent, and the industrial, not thirty-five?
By structures? Or by total impervious?
By structures. Total impervious is seventy, as, as you've noted.
Do you have a breakdown as to how much of the lot is limited and how much is industrial?
I don't.
Which is the greater? It looks like industrial was the greater, which would be the dominating.
I, I don't, I didn't break it down by zones. Do you want it broken down by zone, is that necessary, you want that?
You'd only need that if it, if it affects the setbacks, if it affects anything, impervious cover, building cover, front yard setback, side yard setback, rear setback. If they're the same, we don't care. If one's different than the other, but you gotta go, as John was saying, to the one that wins the square foot race, who's, who's got more square foot, industrial or...
We don't exceed any of the percent coverages in either zone.
And then my, my last question, I think you mentioned there are tenants on site? You mean like, like another business, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, there's no, nobody living there?
No. Not that we know of.
Okay, yeah. Somebody who works a lot. Okay, so that's what I had, thank you.
Okay. I got a couple of questions before I go to the right here for a moment. Impervious paving, have you guys thought of it?
What is it?
Impervious.
Porous pavement?
Yeah, they call it pervious porous, I've seen it both ways.
No.
Cause that'll get you out of the impervious, right? I see it a lot in Boston jobs and stuff.
Yeah, I see it too, and we've been using it in some towns, um...
Well, just saying, if you have an issue with that, um, you wanna think of it, the next thing is, you, you're under the Rivers Act, correct?
Correct.
But I just look at it, Rob, I mean, with a flick of the bic, you're right in the corner of the two-hundred-foot.
Yeah.
There's, we don't wanna see the little corner unless you're gonna cut it.
Say that again?
I'm looking on page three of your sheet, and you show the, uh, two-hundred-foot river. It hits the lower right-hand corner.
Right.
No, no, you gotta be, it's two-hundred feet, then you can go.
No, you could be within the two-hundred feet.
Now, the Rivers Act is, you gotta be two-hundred feet. Boom. I went through that a long time ago, Toll Brothers.
That's not true. We're going through that, we're allowed to work in the two-hundred-foot zone, there's only a speed, but you can only just...
You're allowed to work, but you're not, I didn't think you were allowed to put anything in that two-hundred-foot, but you can talk to, uh, you guys go with the Concom. I ain't even gonna ask you about landscape, cause I don't wanna ask like was asked years ago, is one, uh, Southridge, are they gonna have a good landscaping? I mean, that was, remember that one? Lighting plans, as Sarah said, you gotta show those foot candle stuff.
Yes.
And tell us which way they're going, I assume they're going away. Two-hundred foot, and John had a few comments. The one thing I will, you got two other major things, one of them is with the fire department. We can give you all the circulation, but they're gonna have to do their little turns. That's gonna be the big one. And you're gonna have to show where you are storing the vehicles within the thing, so they can also see that they can get around, cause you just can't say, you guys just drop their trailer and go home. So that's gonna have to be there, you're gonna have to show that, uh, Deputy Chief Paul Barry, cause he's gonna wanna see us.
Might impose like a fire lane or something to always be...
Yeah.
Did he make any comments at all?
What?
Did he review it at all?
No. The only comments we got is conservation, Reiki, how do you pronounce that? Reika, and that was, yeah, and cows, that's it.
Reiki's that, you know?
We don't have any fire, I mean, yeah, we don't have any fire, we don't have any police, and you gotta get a real one from the Board of Health. We typically don't get from anybody else. And as far as the chemical storage, what I should say is, chemical storage is, if you have like five things of, uh, toner, you're over the limit. It's not just household quantities, right, but...
Probably gasoline for your oil mowers.
Well, that's gonna be the thing. You're gonna have more than household limit on all your, not in the trucks, but your gas cans, so...
He doesn't have a gas tank on site, like...
No, no, Rob, it doesn't matter. If you, if you got six trucks, you're gonna have at least, I imagine they at least hold ten to twenty gallons worth of, uh, plastic. That's storage. Okay?
So it's not allowed or...
It's allowed, you have to make a note of it. Which, what will happen is if somebody came in and said, what are all these gas cans? They can give you a fine and everything. You have to tell them what you're gonna have there and how you're gonna mitigate it, that's all they wanna know. You have no other chemicals though?
No, we have oil and gas, we have to cover our business.
And you're gonna do repairs here and all that?
Right.
So think about it, anything in, you're doing repairs here. Antifreeze. And, yeah, everything you think you use and put it down in the quantities, that's, and if you want, the best thing to do is, what, Woolpool Park South, Kate?
No, you know what, we just did West Street not that long ago, across from, um, S.M. LaRusso.
Oh, that's your...
And if you go back and look at that one, that was real recent, so...
But I don't know if that was in the aquifer though.
It was.
We, he had a special permit and they had to do that.
No, Royal Royce.
No, we're talking West, yeah, I think Crossmoose.
They had a lot more, they have a lot more than you're going to have as far as gases, chemicals.
I don't think they came, they weren't in the area for this.
Maybe three or four.
They had, they applied for the special permit and they had to list it all and get signed off by the...
I think they were, yeah, I think they were like three or four, but, yeah, same, same idea, have to list it. And show that they can contain spills.
Just think of it this way, if you were a house, that's what you're allowed. If you start hoarding like toilet paper like people did, you'd be over the limit. That's what it kinda comes down to, and that's what they wanna make sure.
The COVID example.
Yeah, so that's, so you have plenty research you can get to see what they want. You can even ask, uh, Paul when you're there, talking to him about how they handle it, so I just, those are your big, that's, this is something we don't do much, cause we don't have a lot of aquifer stuff, so that's something you wanna look at, so those are just the comments I had, Kate?
Most of my stuff's been covered. I'm glad you pointed out, I was so confused by the storage bins overlapping, I said, how's that gonna happen? So you're getting rid of those other ones?
Right.
Okay.
Gotta move them.
Just let me make sure I didn't miss anything. Where do you, do you have like dumpsters around or anything, like there were a lot of spots that said containers, are there?
They have a dumpster out there?
We have two things, one, we have storage containers, which, you know, you just put...
Yep.
Stuff in. And then I own a container company, part of the business, which we promote, and drop it on the client's house, drop the trash, it's for material.
Okay.
That's...
If there's any dumpsters, you know, can you note them unless, obviously, we always ask for this?
There are two dumpsters, so we use the trash to get it picked up.
Okay, yeah.
The location should be known.
If you can show those, and of course, the snow storage, we always, the snow...
Sure we will, we'll get, we'll, we'll try, we'll get a layout where the puck, truck parking's gonna be and all that, and the dumpsters, and what do you, the storage containers, whatever we have on the site, materials, where the piles are, et cetera.
So...
Spell it all out as best we can, I mean, you know, obviously it moves from day to day, but we'll do the best we can.
And can you just clarify for me, on sheet six, you referred to the degraded riverfront area, is that where you were talking about the, how it's all crushed, packed down?
Correct. Anything, so, yeah, I mean, you don't care, it's conservation, but I mean, you do care, but it's their purview, per se, but anything that's previously disturbed within that two-hundred-foot area is what we call degraded.
Okay.
Things that aren't are called non-degraded, so just for instance, the only amount of work we can do within the two-hundred-foot is either ten percent, up to ten percent of that area that's on the site, or five thousand square feet, whichever is greater. In this case, the five thousand is greater. The total disturbance is just over forty-six hundred square feet, and that includes the degraded, that's already degraded, and any additional that's not degraded.
And you're replacing the degraded with pavement?
Correct. And they look for an improvement, I mean, this site, as it sits today, has zero drainage, zero treatment, everything just runs off the back of the site down into the woods, and eventually makes its way to the Napa River. So there's no treatment, there's no catchment, so this is, in their eyes, for us to improve the site and put drainage in is an improvement, because now we have treated water.
Okay.
Better for everyone, better for the aquifer, better for the area.
I have, all my questions have been covered, so I'm good, thank you.
And John?
I'm looking at a couple of the plans, there's a little square block behind, beyond the retaining wall section, it's got a wood section, and there's a note, looks like it says, prop outlet with riprap?
There's an outlet with riprap through the wall, that's the emergency overflow from the recharge systems.
Okay, so that's the system, which is on one of these plans. Don't wanna separate. So this here... So that allows excess to flow to there, and then it just runs down?
Where it goes today, without any treatment.
Okay.
It's actually, we were out there yesterday, you could see where the water flowed through the woods, the scouring.
You said you have been to Concom once, and it's ongoing, right?
We're going again next week.
Uh, so they've seen these plans. Have they had any comments about the relocation of the, uh, bins in the back, moving them closer to the river?
They look at it as a whole, I mean, their concern is the river, obviously is their biggest concern, the riverfront area. So, I mean, for us to be able to disturb more than is already disturbed within that two-hundred-foot, they wanna see some mitigation. So as I said, there's a, there's an area right over in here that this was filled in, dumped, and it's all invasives, and it's grown in, there's stumps. So we're gonna clean that out, that's part of the, gonna be part of the plan for them, is to clean that out, get rid of the invasives, and then plant it with some native species in there and clean it up. So that's kinda what the trade-off would be, for us to work on the riverfront, we give them something back, they wanna see an enhancement.
Yeah.
They're looking for the site to be improved overall, is what the end of the day is, what they want.
So could you run through what types of materials will be stored in those, uh, outdoor bins there? Do they have a cover to it, or are they just open?
It has a cover, it's for mulch, stone, uh, cover, dry lawn, stuff you use in landscape.
So there'd be loom, stone, mulch, maybe some gravel, maybe, you know, just landscape materials, no, no salt, no salt in proposed.
Nothing that would cause leaching into the river or any sort of chemicals, okay. Sounds like the, uh, west side of the lot is going to maintain most of its current flavor, yeah.
Correct.
It'll be extending primarily to the east. Who do you have as neighbors on the east side?
Town of Walpole.
So there's no residential...
That's all the town, and that's where the trail goes out, the old railroad bed goes up to the, to the new senior center, that walkway. So right here is the, uh, this is the parking area they built, it's like right here.
Okay.
So then there's a trail that goes this way, and then the trail comes down here, this goes up, this is the, this zone line is your railroad bed from years ago. So that, that became the trail from here that goes right up to the senior center.
Okay, which is definitely, so between the senior center and here is mostly, uh...
Well, there's...
Well, there's some, there's...
Yeah, this is the town of Walpole, I don't know how far it is before the next home, but this...
But it's not close.
It's not that close, I, you can't see it from that...
I know I saw, it looked like a driveway, I wasn't sure if it led back to a house or...
That goes, that's the part that goes into the parking area.
Okay. And currently, just the exit near Oak Street is in use primarily?
Correct.
This one, yes.
That's the primary entrance and exit.
Okay, and I saw the gate with the boulders on it this morning. And there's another gate, is that also in current use, or the middle one?
This one with the boulders is infrequently used, we do use it from time to time, but not often. I have this as main use, because I have security cameras to watch everything.
Should I wave this morning?
Yeah, when we do open this up, same thing will apply, again, that's not gonna be for massive trucks to enter, it's gonna be for cars, my office staff, things like that.
So office staff, do you have customers coming in to, like, sign contracts or anything like that, or do you deal, anything like that? So you don't, it's just basically your employees who are there, and tenants, you said, also, right?
Yeah, it's same, yeah, so it's, these people remain, and I'm taking out of my garage, and we're just moving over to here, parking the cars inside.
So will you be increasing the number of tenants you likely have then?
No, these guys will stay here, and again, I'm just moving over to here.
They're gonna take over that?
Yeah, the one tenant that's here is expanded, but he's just gonna take my garage. There's no, uh, there's no increase.
And that tenant has, um, no chemicals or anything issues, is that also another landscape?
Same business, he does, yeah, it's not, yeah, so the, uh, we do the same type of work, but we're not fertilizer companies like, uh, Scotts or something.
Okay, so no, not, not, none of the other tenants have anything that might impact the chemicals?
Correct.
Things that you'll have to file for us, okay. Do we have lines of sight on any of the plans for the exits?
I didn't put the lines of sight, we'll get some lines of sight on there.
Okay. Cause I, I noticed driving down this morning, it's, you don't see a lot, a great deal ahead on you, yeah. I guess that's all my comments.
Okay. Before I open it up, just so everybody understands, you need the fire department, all right, which is gonna affect, and what's been said here, you might, you should probably label what can go in the bins, so there's no question.
Correct.
You can take whatever the choice is, but as long as they know.
We're listed.
Your tenants, remember this, they're still part of the chemicals.
Correct.
And what happened up in Woolpool Park South, what Donnell Murphy had done, is he put every chemical in the world, because what would happen is if a tenant moved in, and he does a different business, and he said, I wanna rent it, and he has different chemicals not listed, it could take him six months to get approved.
So you list it and...
Yeah, and so, and what they did, what he did, was it's probably, I don't know, ten pages long, but if you had a tenant, I wanna come in, and he's got cash in hand, and he wants to have chlorine, he's a pool guy, can't come in, till you get approval for that, which could take, so whatever you think you're gonna use, whatever your tenant may, you're best off just putting that down.
Okay.
Everything included, and you'll be responsible for the tenant, cause the whole thing will get shut down too, I guess. And conservation, we know, and just so everybody understands too, I would say that we are at the end of the bus for the final, when you get everything done, correct? Cause you're gonna get all your approvals for conservation, cause that will affect the plan, so we're kinda like at the end of the, end of the line. So you got a lot of stuff that's been brought up by us tonight, and like I said, conservation, and you gotta make sure, they have to get all the approvals from all the different departments, so we, we talked about Board of Health is, I guess, a big key one, but naturally, police is typically not an issue, but without a line of sight, so I think you know what to do, I just wanted everybody back there in the back row to understand, there's a little bit more work for them to do, so...
Should we pursue the fire deputy fire chief for comments, or do you send that to him?[1672.81]
Well, right now, you don't have anything on there that shows his little, for his turning radius. Well, no different than a cul-de-sac and all that, you know the, how the drill goes with the subdivision. So let Paul, and then you're gonna have to designate on there, and I'm sure he's gonna wanna see where it is, along with the dumpsters and the snow storage, but so he can know, so, yes. If you wait for him, we're gonna be, he gives it to us, then you're gonna go back.
Right, we'll reach out to him.
Grow active.
Every, every time, we tell you, we need to hear from fire.
On West Street, they had to sign off on the chemicals too.
Fired it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, there's a, there's a lot, a lot of little things, but they add up to a lot when you're all said and done. No, nothing individually is a big hurdle to make sure you do it, but with all the things open, it could, it could go a lot while longer. Okay, with that being said, and I will get an extension from you in a moment, uh, anyone? Yes?
Sorry, just have one other comment. Um, on the cover, can you note, um, the type of submittal that it's, uh, for, um, site plan and special permit for water resource?
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I missed that one, I just go through.
Yeah, and Sarah said that, I'd, I'd make another request, but put the areas on it to designate, so if anybody, give me one area too.
You mean, so.
No, have another sheet that shows the resource protection areas.
Oh, okay.
I think he's fully in area one.
You're in a hundred percent in one?
I think so.
Just double check, if you are, just put a note to that effect. That's all, just so people don't have to keep going back and forth or so on. Okay, anyone in the audience have questions, comments, relatives? If you do, come on up. So that means Jimmy's not coming up, right? Oh, wait a minute, you just pushed him? I thought he was speaking for you.
Uh, hello, my name is John Hallie, um, we're a butter to the property, we're at two twenty-seven South Street. We just have a lot of concerns about adding as much, um, square footage that they're talking about to the site, um, being such a narrow road, and I know he was saying that he just used his Oak Street for, for egress for the trailers, but there's no sidewalk along that stretch, and there's a lot of pedestrians that walk by that area to go into the town forest, and there's no way for them, they actually cut through the open property right now to get to the trails. So, and we're concerned about the same thing that water commission was saying about, the conservation commission was saying about runoff into the wetlands area, adding that much impervious pavement in the building runoff. We know there's catch basins, but South Street, as someone noted, um, has no sewer, uh, storm drain all the way down that stretch of South Street. There's no sewer, but there's also no storm bridge, so rainwater, when there's a heavy storm, runs two or three inches thick right down the street, and then off into the town forest area. When there's a heavy rainstorm, it comes into our neighbor's yard and our yard, there's just no, um, drainage at all, it just stays on the street. So we're just wondering, when there's an overflow, where is that gonna go? If it goes out onto South Street, does it add to what's already there? Um, is the town aware of, you know, that, that issue along that stretch of South Street? And, uh, once again, words you're concerned about, you know, now they're adding that much square footage, are there gonna be more trucks going in and out of there, as he's expanding the number of trucks, um, as far as, you know, and the noise that happens over there all the time, moving those bins around and, and high-powered spray washers we hear. There's a lot of, uh, activity in that, in that site, all ti- all time today, morning and the afternoons. It gets quiet sometimes in the middle of the day when all the trucks are out, but it's, it's very, very noisy in the beginning ends of the day, so. I think that's all. Huh? Yeah, I, I mentioned the, a lot of pedestrians on that stretch of, of the road, where, you know, we've been wanting a sidewalk put in there for years, but the school buses, you know, school kids cut through there to go to the high school, um, and there's school buses along that stretch, so.
Okay, the one question I can ask, but I'll answer for Mr. Truax, is he can't put any water out, he's gonna take it all. So if anything's going off there now, it's gonna improve you guys.
Yeah.
So everything has to stay on his, that's one good thing about when you do this or subdivision, everything gets pulled back.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Jim Hines, two sixty-one South Street. Representing for the true homeowner, my mother, Barbara, ninety-six years old, unable to stand here tonight, so I'll do that. I will eventually be the homeowner, I'm afraid, but I wish I had met Mr. Brown before tonight in the lobby, but I hadn't, so I'm glad to do that. I guess I just have a couple of questions, how tall is your building? I don't, I haven't heard that stated yet.
It's gonna be a shed roof, so the shallow side will be facing South Street, and the tall side will be in the garage side.
Okay.
There's a, there's a maximum height of forty feet.
Forty feet in height, in height?
That's the, that's the, that's the zoning guideline, that's the max, is what she's saying.
Oh, that's the max.
We can probably, we can get you a height though, we can, I don't have it on the plan, we can ask the office.
I should say, the house, we are on the corner of Oak and South Street, directly across from the existing building, as you see there. So one of my questions is, thinking of property values, et cetera, is are you planning to leave the vegetation as it is between us? Because it gives a good effective screen from the old building, and looking at the landscape plan, I wasn't clear on that.
The plan is to remove and replace the better landscape, a nicer landscape, and it would be screens, you know, we don't want. The whole idea here is to put all my stuff in the back, so the building in the front will shield noise, shield all that, it'll just be pedestrians in the front. The garden or the walkway across along South Street would be improved, um, you have a big hill. I think it's actually between your, your house and my property, um, where trees and stuff have just lifted and grown up. That all gets improved. What trees come out, I don't know yet.
Right.
But the whole thing will be landscaped, mulched, and we can, as a buffer though, between light and your building, your house and my building, larger trees, I don't want to take them down, so.
Good, I don't want you to. Uh, the big oaks and stuff, it's.
Yeah, maybe it's.
Yeah, we're gonna, it's gonna be a big.
Foundry.
I see.
And that's, and I'm gonna carry that from there through the new building.
One of the impacts is your security lights on the old building shine in the bedroom windows there, so anything that could help that would go for a bit.
Yeah, I think, I think we talked about changing the lights when we did the new building, I don't know what they're called, they're shields or lids, so they'll deflect mainly on the asphalt. We put those in because we had security issues with the police and health, so.
Yes, there, there've been some issues.
Yeah. But I'll get to that, we can, that's an easy fix.
Jim, just so you understand, they're gonna do a lighting plan, and they're gonna do all the foot candles or whatever, that, and they'll show, you should have next to nothing, and we don't allow it go out, so it comes back at them.
Yeah, I'm sorry if that's happening, we'll fix that.
Presently, it goes out.
Yeah. But you don't have streetlights on South Street, so you should be happy, right?
We have one on the corner.
Oh, you do? At that corner?
We have one on the corner.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's further down the corner.
Okay.
It should be on the corner.
But that will be taken care of, cause we, we don't allow, just like water, we don't allow light to go off.
Very good.
Yeah, how do I know, that'll be fixed.
Okay, fair enough. In my house, we're both citizens water monitoring, uh, members, we monitor the Ponson River water once a month each. I'm inactive now, but Mary Pat is still doing it, so we're quite concerned about river health over there, and, uh, I was wondering about the impervious cover, and, uh, why it has to be so much. Do I understand the fifteen percent rule is invoked because you're gonna pave sixty-five percent of, of the lot? Is that what I heard within this meeting?
Wanna answer that?
Yeah.
And I did hear the comment about it would improve the runoff over what exists at this time.
So the existing site is currently, you know, all gravel.
Yeah.
It's, it's eighty, almost eighty-three thousand square feet of impervious, we're kind of on the gravel impervious because it's really doesn't create anything.
Is that a legal definition or what?
Well, I mean, if I was to try and do runoff calculations and submit it to this gentleman here, he would tell me you're gonna look at that as if it's impervious, because it's been there for so many years, and it's been driven on by trucks since, you know, tamped down for years. If you go out there during a rainstorm, it's just sheet flowing right off. And it's actually taking some sediment with it, because there's no pavement. The sediment, any of the finds that are on the surface, and it's pulling it right down off the site. So that's just like eighty-three thousand square feet of, of that area. So I could go in there, propose the building, and just not pave anything, and continue to leave it all gravel, and continue to let it, you know, sheet flow, and just look at what I'm increasing, which is the building, and just take care of that runoff. Technically, that's all I need to take care of, but we're not doing that. So we thought it would be better to pave the site and contain the water and treat it, and put it back into the ground and infiltrate it, did not let it sheet flow down to the pond's river, and clean it up.
Okay.
That's our thought process. So it's not really much of an increase overall on the site, but it's already developed. I mean, we're increasing it in the back corner, we're relocating the bins, that's a little, that's a forested area that we're increasing, and then another area up in the front, so we're only increasing from eighty-three thousand up to ninety-nine thousand. Less than, what, sixteen thousand square feet increased, so it's not, and that, I mean, I'm looking at it as, you know, just trying to be open about the gravel area, because the gravel is like there for X number of years, and it's really not. It's not a porous, like, they could do it better off with the porous pavement than Jim and it suggested.
Which I'm not familiar with, but that's a fine answer, if you think it's.
I think it's a better to pave it, to treat it, and put it back in the ground and control it, whereas now it's going on control to the river. I think it's gonna clean it up, it'd be much cleaner water, discharge, the bank is charged, and what's it's gonna recharge.
I guess I would ask, what happens to the storm water within the systems that you're proposing? It reaches into the ground and eventually to the river?
To the groundwater system.
There's no treatment system, per se, and that's not a water treatment plant.
No, no, no. So the treatment is, you got catch basins to catch it, they have sumps in them, so it catches the first flush, and the sediment's going there, and then it goes from there. So what we call is a, it's a treatment unit, it's a glorified manhole, and it actually creates a whirlpool and drops the sediment itself before it goes into a recharge system. So there's two steps before it gets there to help get all the sediment out of the water.
Okay, I just wasn't familiar with the, with the process.
That's how it works, and so, in my opinion, maybe others have it, is pave it and control it and clean it, and put it back in the ground is what we want ideally to do, especially because we're in an aquifer, we want the gravel to be charged, that's what we'll look and get in here, like, there's not sheet flow, it often sends it to the river and ends up in the hole. You know, we don't have that water back in our water supply.
And that's what Mary Pat happened, James Hines is worried about too, since we're citizens water.
And we're required to do this on the D E P Storm Water Management Guidelines, this is, we're required to improve the site, that is what they call redevelopment. We're required to do this, so we're not doing it as a gift, we're required to do it.
I don't think you'd be doing it as a gift. Yes, I guess that is all I had to say. Just concerned about the visuals from two sixty-one South Street and from the Hallies and Walsons back there. We have, I have no complaints about the business, and this isn't the forum to bring that up anyway, I guess, other than I wish I'd met you before. And, um, I, yes, there was one more thing, the gate, we've been very fortunate not to have that gate in front of the driveway being used, especially Mr. Jermaine back there nodding his head. So you foresee it being used for vehicle traffic?
Like I said, we have four office staff, I assume that they all drive sedans. So like, you'll have garden entrances there, the gate will remain, I believe, um, but there's no trucks going in there, it's gonna maintain this.
As you do.
We kept that shut even before the gentleman bought that house, and before I bought the property, it's just been how we've done things. It's the neighbors, his driveway's right there, his house is right there, his children's right there, I get it, uh, this is where all vehicle traffic is. On an occasion currently right now, we had a, I'm doing work here, once a year, it's open for a day, uh, but that's the only use that will be. My office staff will come pull in and go to the office, which is at the fiery sides. Everybody else here, my staff, everybody like that, like, excuse me, my crew.
They'll be, they'll be asked to, to use that Oak Street entrance?
Yeah, it's not gonna be their space. And then to approve, you know, on these lighting, this will be done in a couple of weeks from you. I did not know that was bleeding out to the street, but that'll be hunted, and then this garden, we've held on improving that because of the general construction.
Yeah, and I wish I had told you to, it's, I think it's because it's second story light.
Yeah.
And the bedroom is second story and.
Yeah, I get it, yeah, we'll hunt it, it'll just be unanswered.
Oh, she calls us.
I should've.
It's fixed, I'm sorry, we didn't, we didn't know that, but that, one has to happen on a new building, and the building that's there now, that'll be fixed, it's, we'll have to do it.
Very good.
Thank you.
There's a lot going on across the street in my house, and, uh, so.
Yeah.
I, I hope you understand that.
Absolutely.
Things are changing over there, thanks for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
While he's coming up, uh, have the architect give a view of from their side, what it'll look like, he can whip that up on his computer, it doesn't take much. Okay, so they get some understanding, more, before you go, more of the height, so they can see, and the other thing is, related to the other building?
Probably similar to this. Probably similar to this, just showing.
But if you put it next to, your building's a two-story now, if they put it next to it, they'll see, I assume it's gonna be lower. So it gives people a visual of what they have and, okay, so.
Hey, um, thanks for having me, yeah, I'm Walson Jermaine, owner of two fifty-one South Street. I have, um, like, two comments, um, first, um, I hear a lot about, um, the, the street gonna be remodeled, like, for, for the better of the street, but, um, I'm, I'm kinda curious on how they're gonna put safety first in term of, um, kids, um, a lot of kids, I have a fourteen years old, but I'm not only speaking for my daughter, right? But, um, I'm especially, um, talking about other kids that coming from Oak Street and, um, South Street on a bike. It's already a narrow street as it is right now, and I'm sure everybody's aware of that. And I'm really fortunate that I met, um, Mr. Brown once, and I was grateful for that. You didn't really use the gates up front, I appreciate that, and, um, really, um, we're really concerned about, um, the street. That's already narrow, there's no way two cars even can cross without one stop for the other to go. Let alone kids that, I mean, not even yesterday, I was noticing a kid that tried to cross the street. I was kinda like, holding my heart, like, seriously. So, um, that's that, that's one thing I wanted to focus on, and secondly, um, um, I, I hear the comment, um, people make, um, in term of, um, property value. So I'm wondering, how's that gonna really improve the property value in the area, um, right now? So those are the two comments, uh, I don't know if the.
Yeah, I think if I can speak, I had this in mind for a while, and I get everybody's house faces a lot of activity. Trucks, equipment, that we're allowed to do, and we use now, and I get the sound, and I, I understand all that. My effort's not to mitigate that, cause we use it for what we use it for, but the building itself is going to be a natural screen. All the sound will be over a hundred feet further away from the edge of the street, in this back area here, and you're across the street here.
Yeah, I'm right there.
So currently, we're doing all of our activity here, all this activity that you see will be done here now, behind what happens to be now a sound area. And, so that would be like the noise and all that, so as far as for property values, if you were to ever sell, you want your property to increase, I would say that it'd be a nice looking building, the illustration we added, windows of L B, cost just to make it look a little bit more, less industrial, um, so, and that coupled with the gardening, that's gonna be excessive, um, just, that's our nature. That would screen a lot, and hip to its neighborhood that we're just happy to be a part of, um, I would think it'd be an improvement. It's a definitely improvement for my business, I'm also saying, I think it'd be a sound barrier, I think it'll look nicer than all the activity that is germane to my business. So I think that, I hope that helps. But again, you walk out your door and you're looking at, currently in a landscape yard with all this equipment, hopefully in here, you'll be walking out seeing a nice landscape front, or that's building that's, um, you know, windows, um, that would be a personal thing, I can't speak on the property values, but I think it would be an improvement for everything. And along the street, I completely agree, it's narrow, I, there's a thousand people that walk through there every day, there should be a sidewalk, and if you open to it, they did it, I just, I, I can't speak to that.
No, I guess my question is, um, from what I understand, you, um, the engineer was, um, stated earlier, um, there's gonna be blocks, right, um, along the way. Now, I'm, I'm wonder, uh, it's already narrow as it is, and I'm sure everybody understand that, um, so how people gonna appreciate that? I don't know if that make any sense to you?
No, I think it does, I think over here, this all, just, all the ground, all the trees and shrubs will remain.
Okay.
We're just gonna improve, add more, more screening, as we talk to the other gentleman, and, and carry that across to the other gravel area. So that'll be more screening, we're not going into the street at all, we're not allowed to.
Well, obviously, I understand that.
And as far as the blocks, that would just be on the backside of the building here, so really wouldn't be visible from the street, um, it wouldn't, I don't know, the, the passageway. I don't know if that's blocked, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You'll actually see last time what we moved?
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I have, thank you, thank you.
Okay, well, what he said is, goes back to that picture, to me, if I was presenting this, I'd have a real picture of what you see now, and a real picture. Okay, well, what he said is, goes back to that picture, to me, if I was presenting this, I'd have a real picture of what you see now, and a real picture of what you, I mean, a rendering or three D of what you're gonna see later. So they understand it, and, because naturally, that building's gonna take up the whole area, so you won't see any illegal activities anymore, like you can now.
Between the two buildings, yeah, we'll keep it all that here.
My own personal opinion is, you probably will, you walk out, you're gonna see something new, something nice, because they're trying to present the office, rather than, you know, they're not gonna make it look, plus your landscape.
Garage doors through and through.
And I assume you like every landscape, well, has, well, some of them, that people go by and go, hmm, looks pretty good. I mean, you're not gonna go by with dead grass, hi, you guys.
I'm dying to change it, I just, I didn't wanna do it until we started this.
Okay, well...
Can I ask a question before we?
Well, hold it.
She coming up? You want to come up?
I just wanted to ask, Professor, is it a metal building?
Yeah, it'll be concrete up four feet and then it's metal.
Okay.
I'm Kathleen Haley, I'm the owner of the house right across the street, John is my son who spoke. I just want to reemphasize, I, I don't know how you would get, how does a person get the police to do a traffic survey? There's a curve that comes right toward our house, we can't get out of our driveway, either dri, either side of our driveway. We have a curved driveway, people walk through our driveway to walk by that curve, because you can't get two cars or a truck and a car behind without pulling over. And last week, I've had to pull over three times to try to go that far and get into my other driveway. And hundreds of people walk down that path every day with their dogs or the kids going to high school. From Brown Drive, from Oak Street, from Audubon Drive, all of those houses on Audubon Drive. It, it's, we sit on our front porch and my, like, like our friend said, that your heart just jumps. I saw, while the surveyors were there yesterday, I saw three young kids, maybe ten years old, on their bicycles, coming out and trying to cross the street right in front of our house, trying to get onto the street. It was five o'clock, they couldn't get onto the street, they went back into the woods and came out way down further. I, I just, I know we have how many trucks now, but how many trucks are you gonna have three or four years from now when you have this big place to put them? It, it just, it is mind boggling to us to think, and how long is the construction gonna take with the construction trucks coming and going? There's school buses that stop on either side of my house to pick up young kids. School buses drive by there, they have to pull over to let a car come by. I, it, it just, there's a wicked curve there. It just seems to me, I don't know why the police don't get involved to do a location, a survey of that locality.
Well, my suggestion would be, they have a traffic safety officer, I think it's still, his name's Luke Pollan, he always gives us stuff. He's the one that determines whether there's a blind side, whether this will meet it, and he would be the guy to talk to. That's his expertise over the police department. I believe it's still, it used to be Luke Pollan, I haven't seen his name in a while, and that he, he should be able to help you on that. I mean, they should be experts, they've been there for a couple of years now. Of course, they also increased traffic on South Street, didn't they?
Oh, yes, they did.
Lot of cars.
And senior citizens.
We've had a few close calls with police that weren't on an emergency run, and they admitted to us what their basins are.
Yes, that's, yeah, it's, it's not the senior center doing it, no, it's that little blue and whites.
Right, right.
No, you can, you can ask, you can call down there and ask, he should come to you. You shouldn't even have to go there, because you're gonna be right outside to see what they can do and make recommendations, so.
I mean, I mean, when we moved there, people went up and down 1A all the time, and then about ten years ago, they were constructing 1A. So everybody from South Wolf, they found out that South Street cuts right over to Common Street. So the traffic has increased exponentially since then, so.
It's not even the cars, you've got Edison trucks still.
Two one-year road used to cut off.
Thank you. Mrs. Haley? Haley, I'm sorry, I haven't seen you a while. I just want to say, your two daughters used to babysit for my kids. Long time ago, well, not that long ago.
One of them, one of them was teaching at Holy Cross and had your, one of your sons pursue, one day she turned around and said, huh?
And I even had Mrs. Hines. I think everybody, Kate, you have Mrs. Hines?
I think everybody.
Name sounds familiar, what'd she teach?
English.
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 Come on.
No, I didn't have her.
Mr. Rollary and I walked all to the high school together, we didn't...
No, I guess not.
Oh, you guys weren't down the dam?
Yeah.
I can't remember.
Hey, that's what happened.
The older we get.
Mr. Truax, so we're kind of wrapping up here, so we need an extension.
Before we do, I just want to ask if Sarah could just go back to her comment about the Zone 1.
Yeah.
So I just pulled that up, and could you just go which section you're looking at? So we're in Section 12.
12.3.8.2.
12.3.8.2, which one?
8.2. Talking about the uses within use regulations. So Section 3 is use regulations, tell you, tells you what's allowed in Zone 1, tells you what's allowed in Area 1 and Area 2. And then Section 3 tells you what's allowed in Areas 3 and 4.
So you're looking at Area 1, which is number...
I'm looking at the 1 revised through 2019, and that's page...
So if you go down further, prohibited uses, keep going.
Yeah.
To... Section C, and it says, each of the following uses shall require a special permit from the planning board or special permit granting authority. And then it goes down and it says, under that section, this is in Zone 1, it says number 4, Zone 1, and then it's, we get a special permit. And in that section, it says number 4, any non-residential use that will render it impervious more than fifteen percent or two thousand, twenty-five hundred square feet or up, whichever is greater.
Right, it's, it's my understanding that that's, without specifically stating that, that that's referring to Areas 3 and 4, because Areas 1 and 2...
It says right above it, Zone 1. Says number 4, Zone 1, and that's A.
All right, just so you, Zone 1...
We'll go to the building inspector.
Zone 1 is the DEP, water, you can't do squat.
No, Area 1, I'm sorry.
Don't get it mixed up, don't be a poor Hamilton.
No, I agree with you. You're right, Zone 1, you can't work in at all. We will go to the building inspector and get an opinion.
Yeah, I mean, it does say modification, and maybe he will accept that, but...
I, I think we're allowed to do the building, as long as we get a special permit for the increasingly pervious.
That's, that's... Better get it from him, because we could say we love you, and you get down there, pull a permit, and goes, oop.
We'll, we'll get an opinion from him, thank you.
So, Robbie boy, you have a lot of homework for us and other stuff, so...
See you in January?
You're gonna be done that quick?
Yeah.
What? I, I know, you know what you're up against with us, what...
And you like it two weeks before the meeting?
No, we don't like it, we require it, because we don't like it on Wednesday afternoon, says, here you go. All right, plus you gotta, you're gonna do a lot of walk around town seeing...
Right. Your next meeting is until October 7th?
Yeah, that's only...
That's only three weeks, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 you're not gonna be ready, because the problem is, I don't want to sit here with, if you come back and everything, like, we've asked, and it's not a problem. I don't want to sit here twiddle my thumbs, because you're not done with conservation. They're gonna be...
Yeah, okay, no, that's fine. So let's go to the next one after that. Better give me three weeks to do my homework and get everything to you.
You have a, is it your opening night on the 22nd?
No, second.
Second? Well, they're the ones we're gonna, you should be able to gauge how long you think you're gonna be there.
We, we had a good site walk, they seemed very, yeah, they were, they were very good, and it went very well, so. They didn't seem to have a problem with the project.
You never know.
October 21st is right before town meeting, just, maybe...
Can we do October 21st?
Yeah, I need an extension through Halloween.
Sure.
Sure. Can, can I hear it, please?
Just give you an extension till when?
Yeah, you're gonna have to fall up and write into it.
Yeah, we're an extension.
So...
Do you need an extension?
Yeah, I think we run out.
I thought site plan's just for...
No, sixty-five days for site plan.
So when you want to extend it to?
Halloween.
10:31.
10:31.
Okay, you're giving that to us, okay, make a motion to allow the applicant, extension up through October 31st, 2021.
Second.
You have a second, any further discussion, all in favor? Aye. All right, and we're gonna go on the 21st, Kate?
Yeah, we have West Street at 7:30.
West Street, what's that?
Weston Spring. The next use.
Oh, the continuation, okay, they're at 7:30, so we'll put them after. 7:35.
Because you gotta give Phil time to do the mulling he wants to.
What do you mean, time?
I mean, he's gotta do the mulling.
If he wants to.
Yeah, if he wants to.
Gives him five weeks though.
Is he on vacation for six?
What time do you want?
All right, is it right after them, 7:35? Okay, we'll continue this on October 21st at 7:35. We just may not go off, because we have one in front of them at 7:30. But many times, we used to be nice and say eight o'clock, and the guy at 7:30 doesn't show, so for a half hour, just sitting there doing this, so. That's why we'll do it, so, 7:35 is show up, won't start any earlier than that, and I don't know, I assume it's gonna be a little later than that.
7:35 and 7:36 for the special permit?
Yes, yes, 7:35, I'll make a motion, well, we'll extend to 7:35 for the site plan, and 7:36 for the special permit. Okay, so that's the only notification you get, so, we'll see you in October.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
All right, make a motion to Jerick? Whoa, whoa, that's right, I'm sorry, no, wrong one, we got a couple of things. They love you. Yeah, I'm gonna get, yeah, yep, and...
We have the master plan standing.
Jesus, I can't stay for that.
It'll be quick. Call you've suffered through enough.
I want to give everybody a memo from Patrick Duchesne, they did that for us, we appreciate it. The members at Lodge, he had stated, and Sam and I talked very briefly about it, but I didn't have a chance to finish. They would like to do the members at Lodge tonight, because Judy Barrett is gonna walk away if they don't, he's a great...
She gonna walk away from her contract?
I'll do that.
They don't want it told, I don't know.
She, she worked... Oh, we haven't, we didn't adjourn, you guys can go. I'd be finding out who Truax, what he's talking him about, whether he's on your dime or someone else's.
So if I could bill you, I would.
If you could bill, yeah. If I could bill you for all the help I've given you over the years.
Thank you again.
You don't?
Good night.
I don't?
Okay, so for the boards and committees, Planning Board, we voted for Phil and Katie. Recreation Committee, they've nominated William Buckley. Trails Committee, Adams Farm, Conservation and Town Forest, that's the one where we said one member from one of those four. And I think there's only one name, so Dean Beavis of Conservation. Sewer and Water, John Hassaniger. Housing Partnership, Andrew Flowers. Select Board, Glenn Maffey. School Committee was to be determined today. EDC is Margaret Kundert. Council on Aging, Janet Fasanello. Oh, business owner, business owner, Donell Murphy. Historical Commission, Jennifer Karnakis. And then At Large, we had two citizens send letters, I think, this week. And we didn't, we didn't get Donell's, did we send any?
I just got it today.
Oh, okay. So I thought we had said, this is for Jack, right? Um, Jack, that we could, that we could vote the At Large ones, not tonight, but a future one, but...
Yeah, I said, yeah, we, what I said about these people is, we met August 19th, between the end of summer and Labor Day, they may not meet, so... But this, this meeting should have been enough for them, which it was, and we also talked about if they get this group going, if these trails will, I agree with that, so...
Those two came in from Conservation regarding, they wanted their own membership.
Okay, let's...
Oh, on the master plan? Yes.
Okay, let's see. I got one from Jack Wiley, they're both related to this, Kate?
I believe so.
Which one's 14th, and, okay, Jack Wiley indicated on September 8th, Dean Beavis volunteered and was selected. The commission recommends that the conservation representative be selected to represent the Trails, Adams Farm, Town Forest.
This is who we have, Dean Beavis.
Yeah.
But he wants a separate one.
Oh.
Yeah, but Conservation strongly recommends the conservation representative be selected to represent the Trails, Adams Farm, Town Forest Committee. Or the Planning Board. Point, additional members. Uh, did we get s...
But we only got him.
Did we get someone from Trails?
No, we just got him.
Yeah, okay, so they, maybe they don't know, they just want...
Yeah, this...
If we're picking among them, they want us to pick.
What Jack wanted on September 10th, is what I'm looking in front of us, and it says Trails Farm, yeah, what you just read, is Dean Beavis, so he should be all set there, correct? That's what I see.
If no one else has come forward from any of the others, to put themselves forth, I suppose, they have the right, they put, they've actually acted...
Send a letter to all of them, right, the Trails and the Town Forest.
But they, okay, we did have one, okay, this went to Patrick Duchesne from Gary Rigott, and I hope I pronounced his name right. Concom already submitted a candidate to represent the Trails, Concom and Adams. He'd like to nominate Mike Brennan to be a member at Lodge. Oh, at Lodge.
Yeah, I didn't understand that.
Okay. He, he has to go, he would have to...
He has to apply to us.
He has to apply for, yeah, they can't come through that way. Now I understand, they want, he wants to be part of it as a member at Lodge, okay. So where were you going? Sarah?
I mean, it's just, just my opinion, I think, I think there, there hasn't been enough time for the advertising for the At Large. And I think, you know, that we're only having one community member, so I think it's, it's really important that we hear from a wide variety of people, so. I would like to wait on just that one, well, and, and I thought, I thought the business owner was no one, so, even to give that one, one more, one more shot, if there's other business owners that want to apply. And all the official town boards.
Well, where, where did this come from?
Pat had. So Kate sent us the, the letters from, from Nancy Dayen and Ashley Clark, but I didn't see anything for Donell Murphy. Maybe that one.
Well, his, his wasn't at home. He didn't apply, he just put his name.
No, he, he didn't, no, his, his wasn't in At Lodge. You know me. No, 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 his wasn't in At Lodge. But it's, yeah, it's, it's a, it's one of our At Large... But it's, yeah, it's a, it's one of our At Large business owners.
It's an At Lodge business owner.
Yeah, those are our two At Large positions.
The business owner was supposed to be sent to us for approval or something, wasn't it? Or wasn't there another one besides the At Large?
There's EDC member, but we had wanted, yeah, okay. Okay. I just said he'd be interested. Like three quarters of the way down, Jack.
All right, so he's asking to fill that. So, that's an open spot. We have a business owner, and we have just a regular person.
Yeah.
So, Donell's expressed interest in doing that.
Yeah.
But there could be others, is what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying. I think, I don't know when the advertisement went out, but I'm, I just would like to give people more time.
Well...
I got an email.
As a business owner?
Um...
That's good.
No, I don't think it was as a business owner. I think it was as, just a Walthall resident that we were looking for. Who'd I get that from?
I didn't get that.
Um, and it said the deadline was the 16th.
It did?
Jeez, I'm always popping up with last-minute emails, huh?
Yeah, I mean, that's good, if, if the town somehow sent emails to people, but...
Kate, did it have, I looked, we looked yesterday, I think.
I didn't think it said the...
No, I don't think, I don't think it said any of that.
I'm trying to find it, sorry. They might have erased it.
We, we didn't...
This was put in, no, it was, well, it's put on the website, but even if we did say something, I didn't see a date, and we talked about that, right?
Yeah.
All right, and I kinda remember what kinda, what Sarah was saying, is, so, if we wait another, make the cutoff by...
If the, if the Barrett Planning Group wants to get started with all these official people...
Yeah, they don't need one person or even, even two. I mean, it's not gonna, there's enough stuff, they're not gonna have a full contingent every time anyway. It won't fit on Diamond Street.
We said at the last meeting, clearly that, we would, we would have everyone, all the boards have their people in by the 16th.
The boards.
And that way, we had the majority of the committee in place, and we could add the extra members.
Yeah, get to get going.
And you had suggested the end of September.
Yeah, I think that's what I remember.
And then we backtrack to the 16th for the committees.
The committees, 'cause they, to get them up and running.
So, that's what we agreed to last meeting.
Okay, so...
Did you find your magic email?
No, I don't see it. They might have erased it.
What's the next meeting date? Kate, for a second?
October 7th, I think.
All right, well, why don't we make it October deadline? If you can put on the website, October 4th.
I get too many emails.
And then I think, you know, if we, if we have several people come for apply, maybe they wanna come explain to us why they're a better person, so we can actually tell them, like, you know, we're gonna discuss it at...
September 7th.
Okay. How about that Friday?
September 7th is when I got the email.
Are we the 4th?
It just says...
First? No, I mean, the...
First is the Friday.
First is the Friday.
And a business.
Yeah, that's my daughter's birthday.
Oh, wait a minute.
Unless you want it off to the first on the 4th.
Yeah, that's enough time. That way, we have it ahead of time.
Okay.
But also, if you put in there, redo the ad that says, "At Lodge Business Owner and At Lodge..."
That's the email address.
At Lodge.
I have no idea how I'm on that list, but...
And please have your...
What was it again?
Not resume, we don't need resume, but just...
Application.
Application, address.
Yeah.
Yeah, letter of interest to buy that date.
And would we invite them to our next meeting, so they can present their case, why they...
Well, if we only have one for business, no need to invite them.
Okay, but what if we have three?
Well, yeah, you might, I don't know.
Right now, we have two for community, so...
There was no deadline on the email.
Let's see. Oh, okay.
All right.
That, I mean, that's, that's what I would like.
I knew people here, I knew people here.
John, if we have like a bunch of candidates, do you wanna have them come and talk to us, or do you just wanna vote based upon what they've sent in, or how are you?
Well, are they, are the people, have the people sent in?
No, when they do, we're gonna, it's gonna be, they gotta get in by October 1st, because we meet the following 7th. That way, we have time, and if there's only one, you don't need to invite them.
How's our October 7th schedule?
Uh, we have the new solar on South Street, we have Homestead Residence here, and we have a town meeting, and we have Lincoln Estates. Did you?
Yeah.
Lincoln Estates.
We haven't seen anything on that yet.
I suppose it'd be fairish to allow them to speak on their own behalf, you know?
Briefly.
Yeah, yeah, limit their...
Like they can say a few words.
So, if you were out there, it would be briefly.
It would be in trouble.
Okay.
I told you.